Good to go, all right. Call the meeting to boarders blue to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Justice John Lee, here.
Justice Lewinsky, here. Justice John Lee.
Here.
Justice Connor.
Here.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Here.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any corrections?
No, I have to abstain from voting.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Need a motion to open the public hearing.
So move, second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries. We're now in a public hearing. This hearing is for the possible submission of one or more community development block grants, application for the 2021 program year. We need to go on record as having this public hearing. There's no one from the public here. Does anyone from the board have anything to say about the all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries. We're now in a public hearing. This hearing is for the possible submission of one or more community development block grants, application for the 2021 program year. We need to go on record as having this public hearing. There's no one from the public here. Does anyone from the board have anything to say about the about this community development block grant? All right, so we need a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And a motion to open our regular board meeting.
So move, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're back into our regular board meeting. A report from the codes enforcement officer. I believe you all have Chris's report. He's been very, very busy. I don't know if you have any questions or anything you want me to share with him.
No, it looks like he's been busy and doing a good job as others are full written.
Yes.
Yeah, just one thing, Chris, I mean, he sends out the letters, but we don't hear what actually transfers after the fact, so.
Well, you would see, if they didn't do what they were in violation of, then you would see a follow-up, either letter or a follow-up.
Notice of violation.
Notice of violation. So I think you can assume that people are following through with what they need to do, in particular with the grass. And then some of them are ongoing concerns, like the building downtown, that's still all in the process of working with that homeowner and with our lawyer in terms of moving that forward. But that's going to be a long process.
That's the house.
The house. And that is, that is progressing, but it's slow. Yeah. But if ever there's something on here that you want more information about, he is here on Wednesdays and Thursdays. And he'd be happy to address it and give you more detail, or I'm happy to do that and I'll share with you what he says.
It's like the second email that goes to grass at 139 Elm Street, I believe it was in Canada.
I think that's been done.
It has been, it has been moved, yes.
Yeah.
The building across from the school?
Yes, yes. Yeah. Yeah.
It's quite a job.
Oh, I bet, that was like a hayfield. Yeah.
Yeah, just.
Right, here it was quite bad too.
That was really bad too, and that's been done now. Yeah.
For now.
For now. Yeah, and it just grows.
Knows spec like that.
And what about, so at the same address of 139 Elm Street, what about the building itself? I know that's, was in a start for renovation and it's just sitting there.
I think the issue is that he, the owner is in Canada and he was doing the work himself and he can't come down right now. He probably doesn't know anyone to hire or maybe can't afford it. So I think it's going to sit until that board is open.
Because I think, I think the work on the property, the building itself, I think can stop long before the pandemic.
Yeah.
It's been sitting idled for a while.
It's definitely something I could mention to the code enforcement officer.
I mean, I understand them, you know, individuals not being able to get down here to take care of their property, but
Yeah.
let's hope that gets remedied soon.
Let me just check on that, let you all know. Any other questions or comments?
No.
No, he seems to be doing a really good job.
Yeah, I think he's doing a really good job. All right, here's my report. Many times I hear people complain that there's nothing to do around here. Here's some ideas of what you can do in and around the village of Champlain. Every Saturday, starting this coming Saturday, from nine until noon, there's a farmer's market in Puckett Park. And on some of those days, there will be festivities going on. We will have two concerts in Bill Earl Park, one on July 31st and one on August 26th. We have a disc golf course located along the banks of the river and horseshoe pits in the Parkview River Street. The sixth annual Amazing Champlain Challenge Kids Fun Run Series began last night. And that will be held on July 25th, August 8th, and August 22nd at 5:30 PM. The boat launch is a perfect spot to begin a kayak or canoe float on the great Shaysay River. Plus, there is a kayak story track there where you can lock your boat to be able to access it more easily. Forms for this are available at the village office. We have an active book club in the village, a wonderful public library, several little libraries along the streets. The community garden is in full swing. You cannot help yourself to the vegetables there. But I'm sure that those gardeners will be sharing some of their surplus with their neighbors. The playground will soon have a new basketball hoopla and two new pieces of equipment will be installed later this summer. For those who enjoy walking or cycling, the Northern Tier Rec Trail is a beautiful path which stretches for several miles. These are just a few of the many activities that one can enjoy in the village of Champlain. Report from the trustees. Tom?
Not much to report, but I will mention that it's time to close out the year for the order board report.
Yes, and I did see that email.
Yeah. And the other thing there is, you'll probably get Joe Ashline contacting you, I would think, because he's trying to put together any changes in the village. Well, I don't know if you can provide this enough, but one of the ones that I talked to him about was the old Champlain laundry. I know they added on to that within the last year and put a loading dock in.
Right.
It just changed the square footage, would we have that on file for him?
The square, I don't.
Would it be part of the building permit?
It would be on the building permit, yes.
Okay.
I don't, it's changed anything as far as the property itself.
Nope, it's still.
But I see the EDUs would have to do.
It may change slightly because of the square footage addition, so he's going to be looking for that. That's where we're at, trying to get that closed out. Got two meetings scheduled, hoping to finalize all the data and get the report on.
Yep. One day that will be back in office tomorrow, so.
Okay. And can we use the meeting house?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Yep, we can schedule that after.
I'll give those two weeks check-ins.
No problem.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Chuck?
Well, I don't have a lot, but I've been just going around the village, just taking a look at things. I had discussed with you the sidewalk on Main Street, which is really, really bad. It's, actually, it's a hazard. I mean, throughout that, the whole stretch of the sidewalk with the bricks on both sides. But I know there was like a number of them just, they were pushed up. Looks like somebody might have fixed that in front of the nutrition place.
Yeah, maybe.
Looks like they might have fixed, but, I mean, there's just so many spots along Main Street, both sides, that it's really a hazard.
Yeah. It's very unattractive.
I know, there's probably not much to do at this point because we don't have the funds, but.
We have, we put extra money aside. We have some sidewalk money, so we do have some.
Right. I think that's future, oh, things that need to be done is that, this should be kind of a high priority. The community garden, looks like it's going well. Been a struggle getting rid of the weeds.
Haven't looked at mine in a few days, I'm sure it's bad.
It looks like things are growing pretty good.
Have you had any rabbits or anything into it?
Oh.
Not, no, no.
Well, not recently.
Nothing recently.
Well, they came to my house, they cleaned us out.
If you see a very hefty rabbit waddling around, it's been at our house, cleaned out the entire garden of lean beans. Everything. We've never seen them eat, but sure plants.
We got a lot of nice tall stems now.
Yeah, we have beautiful stems.
Oh, what a shame.
Yes, every one of them.
Well, I did have, you know, something after my stuff in the garden. But since then, we've moved a couple proud hogs and one, one skunk. So we haven't had anything, I haven't seen anything.
I haven't seen anything, no.
So.
Haven't heard of anyone seeing anything of that.
Wow.
No, I think we just have a very chunky bunny running around.
I will have something coming up in due business.
So nothing else on your report?
Nothing else, really.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Talking about the garden, we have 23 pumpkin plants growing.
Well.
They're doing well.
Good.
So, yeah, fingers crossed it stay like that and grow some pumpkins. Our fun run was last night, our first one, and we had about 24. Yeah, 24 participants, so it was nice to see.
Oh, it was so much fun.
Very exciting. This Friday, I'm going to do an intro to geocaching at 1 o'clock. We'll start at the library. There are three geocaches right here in the village and I'll show those who are interested in it.
Can you explain what that is? Because we're all sitting here going, I have no idea what that is.
It's like a scavenger hunt.
Oh, okay.
There is a website, geocaching.com. And there's also an app you can put on your phone, it's free download, and it's free to do. You just create an account and it will give you coordinates to follow. And the app on your phone is easy to use because
It's been around a lot, right?
there's a map. Yeah, it used to be just the coordinates and you would have to find it yourself on a map. But with the app on the phone, it's very easy to use and so it'll put you in the right direction. You can see the roads, you know, where to go to.
Oh, wow.
And each person who's the, they're owners of the geocache will give information about where it's located. A lot of times it's just a tiny little case, it's a round case. Sometimes it's a magnet, other times it's a bigger case where people can label treats, like a pin or coins or stones. Then you can trade through there. And then you just log it in that you have found it and then you go on to the next one. So you leave the case or the container there in its hidden spot. Some of them are a little tricky to get to, some are pretty easy. But I've found over 150 of them in the last two years when we can get out and do it. So it's, it's all around the whole world, so, yeah, it's not just in our area. It's, yeah, they've been around 30 years or so, something like that.
It's Friday at one.
Friday at one, yeah.
Except I wanted to come to do it.
Come do that. It's fun, the kids love it, adults love it, I mean.
Yeah, what a great thing to do as a family.
Yeah. And it was, it was a good thing last summer, you know, during the lockdown, being able to get out and still do something where you're not with people.
Awesome.
And I'm going to plan an evening one, I think, July 19th. I haven't set that up yet because there are a few families that cannot make the 1 o'clock one and they want to do it another time, so. Actually, I think I did set that up today. I don't remember the time. But July 19th will be a evening one. I have not yet set a date for the kids' book club. I have a meeting next week at the library, so we'll have more information on that. July 24th and August 14th, the farmer's market will be kids' days where the kids can come down and sell their crafts or baked goods that they have worked hard on. So they get to enjoy the process of coming up with an idea, creating that idea and selling it and then making a profit. I have a few families who are interested in that. And I'll try to be setting up a volunteer day to do, to paint the basketball court, half court. I'm thinking July 23rd, that's my next open day. As long as there's no puddle.
I know, depending on the weather.
Weather permitting.
Yeah, there is a puddle.
I know.
Well, we can, we can sweep all of that off.
Which we've done.
Which we have done many times.
Should, should that be sealed or something like that, that lifetime?
Well, if you got such a dip, it'd have to be.
Oh, no, I mean, just seal it, like you seal a driveway.
Oh, I don't think so. Well, only because we also have thought about plans of redoing that entrance to the park, so I wouldn't want to put money into it.
Pretty good shape though, it hasn't been sealed.
Yeah, considering.
Yeah.
Plus, our map is there, we don't want to come back.
Is there, and I did see a family using it last week, so it was nice to see that.
I used it with my granddaughters, yes. Yes, I stood in a state and asked them what's due, I was saying.
Oh, nice.
Thanks. Yeah, so that's all I have now.
Great, thanks, thank you. Kim?
I have nothing.
That's okay.
That's fine, yes. All right. A report from the clerk treasurer.
The only thing that I have is the water billing totals. The water is a total of 60,344.75. And sewer is 65,828.74.
And the presentation of the warrant and payment. We have some additional invoices. Of course, this is early in our fiscal year, so things are looking pretty good. There are motions.
So we can, we can approve the warrant of 186024 with additional items of 358.16 from 12/19 to 1840. The water class, is that something we're going to address? We can do that now or we can do it later on the meeting and redo this.
Let's, does the board mind just jumping to that water class and discuss that first?
That's fine.
All right, so there, some of them then do need water credits. And there is a class in Alexandria Bay. Of course, the question there is, that's almost three hours away. So I think they're supposed to be there at 8:30, they'd have to leave here at 5:30. That's all, and then the return trip, so you've got six hours of travel that would all be paid, of course. So it's a little expensive, the class itself is an expensive, but it would be a little bit of an expensive day for time. Woody called me today and he personally felt that it was a long ways to go for this class. And I said, well, I know that Robert needs credits by August. I said, is there going to be another class? And he seemed to think that there would be something online, but I don't know that that's guaranteed. So I said, well, I'm going to bring it up to the board. Yeah, and I said, I'm going to have the board discuss it and if they're willing to pay for it, then whoever wants to go, we will pay for them to go. And I see we have Robert and Jimmy listed.
Yep.
Did, did Mike, how did we know that, well, I know Robert had to.
We, this is kind of preliminary because the payment is due by August 6th. They will need to get okay from Mike Joffe as well. They can go on that day. This is preliminary to make payment in case we do do it, we need to pay by August 6th, so we'll have a check ready.
Yeah. So I mean, we could, we could authorize up to three to go, not knowing for sure who's going. Or we could say, let's find something closer, but I can't guarantee there is anything closer quickly.
So what if we approved the money store ahead of time, just in case we can't find anything else? Or we just have that slated?
I think that's a very safe thing to do.
Yeah, three, if you have three people going, then I'll leave one person here.
Well, you're probably not going to have three going, but I'm just saying, if, if a third person does want to go, then we should be able to have that person go.
I just heard Robert and Jimmy's name, you mentioned those people that need those credits, I don't know about Mike Joffe or not.
Woody needs the credits too, but he doesn't need them as soon as Robert does.
Okay.
Do you know if Mike needs them?
I don't think Mike needs them.
I, I didn't hear any names.
No, I don't think he needs them.
So you have 120 listed, is that?
For two?
It's sixty dollars.
Only for two. So we need additional sixty dollars on top of that.
Yeah, the class is only sixty dollars.
Oh, that's reasonable.
So that's very reasonable, it's just that it's so far away.
Right, I don't think it's a money issue about the course classes, it's just.
But if they haven't found anything closer by now, I don't know if they'll be able to buy the time.
Yeah, I would think something, I would think that something would be listed by now, there's going to be something closer.
And I don't know what the online options are. And I don't, yeah, I just, I don't know. But Woody said there may be some online options. Maybe he's thinking of that for himself in particular, but if we go ahead and approve up to three, then if he wants to find something else, that's fine. Does the board feel okay with that?
Yes. Are they okay with going three, three hours each way?
It sounds like it.
Woody, Robert and Jimmy were fine with it, they were talking about.
Yeah.
They were okay.
Yeah.
So as far as this one costs, I'll end up paying overtime.
That's, yeah.
Because of the expensive travel.
Mileage.
Mileage.
Mileage too.
Miles.
And meals.
Two of the meals are covered, so.
Yeah, meals are included.
Breakfast and lunch isn't covered, so they, possibly.
Yeah. But they travel in one car, so it's, yeah. Okay, so could I have a motion?
Yes, so move, I make a motion to, I guess, $180 is what we need, right?
That's expensive.
Well, the expenses, we wouldn't approve till later though, right?
Yeah, right, they would come in on a separate voucher.
Yeah. And we just need to approve the school at this time, which is $180 for three, three people to attend.
One second. Okay, any other discussion? All right, roll call, Mary, please.
Justice John Lee?
Aye.
Justice Lewinsky?
Aye.
Justice Connor?
Aye.
Justice John Lee?
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye. All right, so now back to the warrant. We'll go with the bottom, the bottom number, plus another sixty.
Plus another sixty, yeah.
Plus another sixty.
So it'd be 19,398.40?
Yeah. All right, can I have a motion?
So move, I make a motion to approve the warrant with the additional invoices totaling 19,398 dollars and cents.
One second. All right. Discussion, questions on the abstract?
Yeah, I got a question on document number 31. What was that for?
Wait, 31? On, under the water. Underwater? Yes. Oh, there it is. Mill Street Crossing Water Line Improver Project. We had to.
That, it was, Mike was working as, for himself, for his business, to do work at Mill Street that had something to do with the water line that had not yet been taken care of. This was back, way back.
Yeah.
It was, it was a while back, but he, he submitted his bill to the town, but they wouldn't take it directly from him. He had to submit it through us. So he took, he gave his bill to the village, the village created an invoice for the town, the town paid us. And now we have to take, pay like that. But they wouldn't pay him directly for the water line project.
Even though he was doing it under his own.
Under his own business.
Under his own business and it was really part of the project.
It is a roundabout way of doing it because they, they need him to do it through the village.
Okay.
That's what happens.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. Other, other questions?
Nope, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Looks good for another one? It's kind of noisy over there. All right, roll call.
Justice John Lee?
Aye.
Justice Lewinsky?
Aye.
Justice Connor?
Aye.
Justice John Lee?
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye. A report from the superintendent. About Mike's list. You can see that they've been very busy. They've been working a lot on the streets, even though the paving is delayed till later in the summer, they've still been working on them. Lot of work on Oak Street.
It's the bucket truck, OLS, he's still OLS.
Off service.
Off service, is it?
Yeah, it's got a part that's, I guess, very, very hard to find.
Oh, yeah, it's pretty old.
Yeah. I don't, of course, don't remember what that part might be.
Something drew the boom, wasn't it?
I think so.
If I remember right.
Yeah. Yeah. Hopefully, we can get that located and get it fixed. They did spend a day last week working on the installation of the basketball hole.
Didn't put a dock in there?
He thought that you were going down there to do something first.
Well, I can still get the dock in. I, I really don't do it, I need to, I told him, just get together with me and we'll find some shim material to put that back together. And I haven't had time to come and find him.
Okay. All right.
I think all I need to do is put that kayak launch back together.
Yeah.
Is wrap the plate with, you know, a piece of rubber, for example, to shim that up so it can be tighter, because it wasn't tight enough, I think it's having it torn apart.
You're talking about the ones that, that the kayak sits on top of that one? Was it just one that broke loose?
Well, the whole side ended up breaking loose somehow because they pulled it back in pieces.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Part of it ended up downstream.
The first thing that happened was one of those bars came detached. And then I don't know how the rest.
How the rest.
I don't know how that happened.
Happened, right. I don't either. But to keep those from, keep that from happening, we just got to, I think I have some rubber material that's about an inch and a half wide that we use to wrap each plate. I went down and looked at it and that's the extent of it, because there was something going on every day.
So, so maybe you'd help me?
Yeah, I could give you a call if, if we know what I'm putting together, but it's trying to find the time to do it, our schedule date. I gotta drag this daisy over, it doesn't matter.
I can't do the laundry. Yeah, I mean, if you want to set something up, then, I mean, I'd come down too. Look at your schedule.
Yeah, so Thursday we're leaving on another camping truck, so it's like, it won't be a sweep.
That's okay. That's okay, it's, I mean, when I've gone kayaking, I've just gone right in the launch and just, I get in, I mean.
Well, yeah, I went down there to look those people out.
Yeah, I mean, people are, people are using the reverter even though we don't have that out right now.
It's a shame we're not using the dock because we spent a lot on it.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I mean, I can definitely tell Mike that the dock can be attached.
Yeah, I mean, I could go in. He's, you know, has to position it with those brackets for the kayak launch.
Yeah.
Pacing it out.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the, on the, parallel with the bank, so that's what we talked about, yeah.
And then putting the kayak launch under the dock, that's pretty simple.
Yeah.
I can, even Chuck and I can do that once I find that power.
Okay.
Well.
I probably shouldn't have committed myself for a moment, I'm clinically ill, so I can't.
It's okay. That's fine, don't worry about it. I'll mention this in the part two. Anything else, any other questions on his report? Okay, so as long as we're talking about Mike's report, I think I'll bring up this vertical storage tank. So, did you get? Oh. Oh.
No, it's okay, I was just thinking, maybe when Zep and I could screw it in.
Okay, well, let me know if I can help, I will. So this is a, um, storage tank for, um, the, uh, one of the chemicals down at the water plant.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, the way this works is, uh, if you have a tank that's under a hundred and eighty-five gallons, you don't have the oversight of the D E C on that, on that tank. Um, we have a very large tank down there now, and so we have to have a spill prevention report, which is very, very detailed, and we've been under violation because we did not have a complete report, and that was primarily because the engineers should have done that when we opened the water plant, it wasn't done. It's fairly highly technical stuff, and Woody and I just didn't really know how to write all of it.
I know, I know, you're working on it.
And, uh, if, Corey did help us, Corey Reed did help us, and, um, sent a bunch of information, and we finally pulled it together, and it was sent out, I think, on Friday? Thursday or Friday?
Thursday or Friday.
Thursday or Friday? And so I said, please let us know that this is, you know, complete, and I haven't heard yet, but he would have just gotten it. So cross your fingers that, because it took hours and hours and hours. If we go to this one hundred and seventy-five gallon tank, we don't have to do that, we won't have that oversight. Uh, the tank we have is way bigger than we need, and Woody feels that it would just be a lot easier if we went with a different tank. And Mike agrees, so there are two things.
Is this, is this in the old part of the plant, or?
No, it's in the new part.
It is in the new.
Yeah, it's in the new part, it was part of the new part. Yeah. You can see, uh, two quotes, four oh two forty-two and six fifty-three ninety-nine. Um, Mike is recommending the one from Granger. So, could I have a motion?
Yeah, just need one tight.
Yeah.
Is there shipping? Um, let's see here.
What says on the title?
We require a special shipping, additional charges may apply.
Yeah. I would assume both of them would have shipping. So, I mean, we sh- I think we would assume that the one that's two hundred dollars less, even with shipping, would still be less than the other one with shipping.
Well, Granger's a good company.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, to get this on the, on the floor, I'll make a motion that we purchase the tank from Granger at four oh two forty-two.
In a second?
Second.
All right, so, um, let's discuss this.
Yeah, I mean, it's got, it looks like he slipped off the shipping here, but doesn't have any additional.
Janet, do you have anything on the side?
Yeah, that's why I, it's, it's not in on these additional pages, unless it got cut off.
The, the national tank is on the very bottom of our page, it's add to cart shipping quote, but.
Right.
Doesn't give us, give a number.
Yeah, this says, uh, it just says you price four oh two forty-two. Ships within fifteen business days, it didn't say anything else.
I agree with your theory that there's really, there's more likely shipping on both of them.
It sounds like, the way, the way, that's more of it on the other one. The shipping quote, so.
And the, uh, Granger one says shipping weight fifty pounds, and the national tank says sixty pounds. But there's nothing about the cost. Well. I don't even know what I would expect the shipping to be, it's a little hard to approve a.
Well, it's just say, plus shipping, whatever it is.
Well, maybe, unless it was like, you know, two hundred dollars or something.
And would you be adding the extended protection plan?
I doubt it on a tank, I don't.
I, I don't think there's much that goes wrong with those tanks.
I know, it's, it looks like it's for sort of.
It's just a big plastic tank to store, so.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I would, I would guess we don't need that. Hmm. So how do you want me to?
Word it?
Word the shipping amount?
Would you? Would you think it would be more than a hundred?
I wouldn't think so.
Could we say up to five hundred?
I mean, you'd have to have two hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents worth of shipping to even come up to the six fifty-three.
Yeah.
I can't imagine, no.
A four hundred dollar tank has two hundred and fifty dollars in shipping.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty dollars in, in shipping costs.
It's only fifty pounds, so.
Yeah.
Could we just approve up to, say, five hundred or something?
Yeah.
I think that's.
Or even approve up to six hundred, just to say that.
So I don't have to call you all back in.
Yeah. We do say four oh two, we do say shipping.
Plus, plus shipping and whatever the shipping is, is that fine, without a hundred and fifty dollar amount to it?
Can you do that?
Yeah.
That should have to have a.
Oh, I think.
That should have to have a dollar amount on.
We usually have a dollar.
Yeah, we usually do have a dollar amount, that's why I was just suggesting to go up to, up to something, I mean, say up to six hundred.
No, up to five fifty.
Okay, so, let me just reworden the motion?
Sure.
All right, so make a motion to purchase the hundred and seventy-five gallon tank from Granger, which was a purchase price of four oh two forty-two, but approved up to a total of six hundred to cover additional shipping charges to get it here. Oops, I agree with you, I have to give it one hundred dollars.
No. Well, let's hope not.
Yeah.
Uh, a second on that? Second.
Well, you know what?
Yeah, I know, that's the thing, I mean, yeah, well, in that case, we would be looking for someone else.
Right, yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Justice Chombley?
Aye.
Justice Lewinsky?
Aye.
Justice Connor?
Aye.
Justice Chombley?
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon?
Aye. Uh, correspondence?
Correspondence from Nymer to John Scheller. Notice of violation for one 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 three seven nine. Correspondence from Senator Dan Stack regarding American Rescue Plan Act funds. Correspondence from Don, Donna Giro requesting a wastewater credit. Correspondence from Coast Enforcement Officer Mottat to Port Monahan, one eighty-eight South Street. Correspondence from Coast Officer Mottat to Mitchell Gay of Fortunus Brew Street. Correspondence from Coast Af, Coast Enforcement Officer Mottat to Matt Loughlin regarding sixteen Cedar Street. Correspondence from Doug Powers to Coast Enforcement Off, Officer regarding sixteen East Street.
Under your business, we have the marijuana legalization, with a local opt-out of retail sales option. I'm just going to summarize this a little bit, just for the public, if anyone's watching this and they wanna understand how this, how this works, so.
Mike, can Mike help me as well?
Well, I, I, I'm no expert, but, yeah.
I love this, I love this signal, it's always hard to figure out.
So, um, with the, um, with the new, uh, marijuana legalization resources for cities and villages, the new legalization, it's going to be changing a lot of laws in the state. But one thing that is, um, available to cities, towns and villages is an opt-out on retail sales. Um, there's a deadline of December thirty-first for that, so any local government that wants to opt-out has to have everything in place by that time. I would remind everyone that this legalization is regulated and it's taxed. The actual sale, a retail sale, will not start until late twenty twenty-two or early twenty twenty-three, so we're a little ways out. And this is very similar to the regu, regulation of alcohol, so the alcohol board that the state has is, is very similar to that. Um, villages can opt-out of allowing retail dispensaries and onsite consumption, so that's what we're discussing tonight, just the whole idea. We also have the ability to establish local laws, um, to, which would be subject to a permissive referendum on or before December thirty-first, as I mentioned. If a local government does opt-out of having retail sales, that can be repealed at any time. So if we make the decision to opt-out, wait a while, we can always get back in if we want to. A local government can also pass local laws, which govern the time, the place and the manner of operation, so if, say, we decided that we're going to allow retail sales, uh, we had no problem with that, we also can weigh in on the time, the place and the manner of the operation. Okay? So the discussion, I just wanna hear what your ideas are on this.
My first.
Concerns or support or?
My first question is, do we know what other communities are doing around this?
No, I have no idea.
Okay.
Um, I would as, well, I shouldn't even say I would assume, I'm not going to assume, I don't know what anyone else is doing. If the town should opt-out, uh, they're opting out for outside of villages. Which I found was interesting. But I don't know what the other villages are doing, I don't know what the city of Plattsburgh is doing or any other towns. If you opt-out, you do, also do not share in the income that's made.
Right.
So.
And you're also a sales tax.
Right, so for financial reasons, I would guess that many local governments probably will stay in.
Is this similar to what Curaleaf is in Plattsburgh?
Um, but it's more of a retail store, so, you know, you.
So not so much a medicinal dispensary?
Anybody could go in there and buy them.
Yeah, but medicinal will be in, part of it also.
Right, yeah.
Um, I mean, they do mention that, but it would also be just going into, uh, a storefront with, you know, different jars with different, I don't know if flavors is the right word, but I, um, and.
Brands.
And, and, you know, just.
There is a better word, but I can't think of it.
Yeah, um.
Spoons.
Yeah, so it, it's really like a shop.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, Vermont has quite a few now, and my state in Oregon has them too, so.
And I would imagine that they would maybe have other items in there, um, means of using the product.
Yeah, I would think so.
I don't know, I'm, I'm not against it, I see it as a, as a controlled and legalized way for folks to purchase it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I see it as revenue.
Mm-hmm.
I see it as a business, to be established.
Mm-hmm.
And safer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I really am not opposed to it.
Mm-hmm.
It's not any different than a bar.
Right.
Um, it's not.
It's regulated.
Yeah, and there's age restrictions and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And I would imagine if you sold to someone who's underage and if you were just like a bar when they serve underage people, then you would be subject to fines and penalties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
Mm-hmm.
You need permits and.
Yes. Yeah, it's gonna be very tightly regulated, I mean, they're creating new boards for it at the state level. Um, what do you think, Chuck, do you have?
I got mixed feelings, I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm convinced either way at this point, but I know we're gonna make a decision. Because either way, you know, well, if we decide to opt-out, then we'd have to probably go with immersive referendum.
EBITDA.
Would have to be done
Process.
Before the end of the year.
Yeah, we have to look at it.
Because we don't have an election prior to the end of the year, as far as village.
Mm-hmm.
Like, I agree with Tom, I don't, I don't have a not against it either way or for it, against or for it, I, it is a form of revenue, how much, I can't imagine a lot.
I'm really not sure.
I have thought about it, but I just think we'll go either way.
Okay. Well, I feel, um, as Tom expressed, I, I, I see it as, I see it as a business, I, the regu, it's gonna be very re, regulated, um, I'm not opposed to it.
And that's not even to say that anyone would set up shop here.
That's true.
But if the, if the opportunity were to present itself, we would already be set up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, having done what we needed to do.
Mm-hmm.
It would be easier for them, than if we opted out and someone decided they wanted to open a business, then you would have to go back, and I would imagine there's gonna be hoops to jump through to, to rescind that.
Mm-hmm, I'm sure. And all of our zoning, um, is applied, of course.
Right, yeah.
So it's not like they're gonna, you know, someone's gonna open a shop on a certain residential street and it's gonna increase some kind of traffic and.
Right.
Right.
So, uh, we have pretty, we have pretty strict zoning here too.
Right, so it has to be controlled under, under the local zoning laws and under, under the state regulations.
Mm-hmm, right. Okay. So if I'm hearing you right, no one is adamantly opposed to this.
No, I, I'm curious as well, if Chuck asks, is there any other communities, you know, that are looking at this and they're like, oh, we won't knock this, you know, and I'd just be curious what their reasons are, if that was so.
I, I'm sure I could find out.
If you can, sure, just, we can discuss it next time, so.
Mm-hmm. No, we won't either.
Uh, so.
I can let you know though.
Yeah, just let, let us know if.
Mm-hmm.
I would have to guess that there aren't many opting out.
I would think not.
Well, any form of revenue coming in is, is, um, yeah, yeah, it's.
Yeah, okay, I'll see that I can find out. Any other discussion on that? All right. Um, sidewalks, uh, Chuck did bring up the, the deplorable condition of main street sidewalks, which I completely agree with you. But we do have a sidewalk committee?
Yeah.
Or is it you two?
Yeah.
I think so. Um, there are many sidewalks in the village that are in very, very poor repair. We do have some money set aside, I think we added some money.
We did, because we, we were feeling we're probably gonna have to contract it out.
Yeah, so that's, that's my question, is if we wanna contract it out during this season, we're gonna have to get on that, and then we're also going to have to decide what we're going to have done first, where it should go. Um, I mean, it's a very expensive when you contract it out. We did that a few years ago on Prospect.
And I'm guessing if we were to take on the challenge of fixing main street sidewalks, it's gonna be concrete, we're gonna take, uh, pavers out and just.
Yes, that's what it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it would be.
Maybe, I don't know if the, the others should wanna take them out, you know, have somebody pay, put, do the paving? Come down costs, I don't know.
It's possible.
And maybe, maybe even, I don't think, people would want those pavers.
I think we sold some of them last time.
We did, we took them out to bed and.
Yeah. Nice, yeah. Um, I, I wouldn't, uh, I wouldn't commit the DPW crew to doing that without talking to.
Right, I, I can, sure.
But it, you know, is that, we can, we don't have enough money to do all of Main Street, I'm sure. So, we, do you wanna look at a section, do you wanna tackle? I mean, I get complaints about the rest of the sidewalk on Prospect, you know, that nice one narrows to this, to this, to this.
It does.
And then he knows, well, and then there's none.
And then there's none.
Um, Oak, Oak Street, Oak Street is horrible, we have sections in Oak, on Oak Street, and it's the same thing, that further you go up, they go like this. I call them goat paths.
Yeah.
Um.
It wasn't.
So.
Spur for time or, or rate either?
No.
I do drive through more time, took notes.
Probably the only one that's fairly decent is Church Street, Church Street is not really bad.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't know, but this is something we need to get on, because this is July. We're gonna find someone to do this by September, maybe.
We have to put it out to bed.
Yeah, it has to be put out to bed.
Yeah.
I would think that, seen as. I would think that seen as, seen as Main Street's gonna be paved, that it might make sense to do. That area downtown, it'll just make it look.
It's supposed to look all right.
Nicer, yeah.
Would you say maybe from Cedar Street to, I don't think we can afford to do all of it. Cedar Street to, I don't know, the Yellow Building?
Cedar Street to a round of funs.
Yes, that's a section.
Oh, that ought to get us a little later.
I, I'm sure you remember last time we got the bids, I mean, one was like really, really high. The other one was more reasonable and then we ended up having a little issue with it, but, yeah. I think we have to say, uh, well, obviously for the bid, we have to say a, a footage. And they've got to be ADA compliant.
Which is what, four feet?
Five, wait, four?
I thought it was four feet.
I think it's four.
Is it four?
I'm not positive, we'd have to look at it.
I can imagine what they did on the corners.
Well, it's easy to look that up.
Maybe it is five.
I thought it was five.
Yeah.
And I thought that's why we're so.
Yeah, maybe it is five.
Because Oak Street's gonna be a major problem.
Oh, Oak Street is.
With our treason.
Well, you've got sections of Oak Street up by the, the old mar place where it literally is up to that stone wall and then the ditch just. You know, it's like. Those are some, those, those sidewalks were put in. More than a year ago. Yeah, probably.
Right after they took out the wooden ones.
Yeah, really.
One thing I notice also on the sidewalks on Main Street, going as you're going up the hill, going towards Blue Letter. There are shrubs and stuff. That are right there over the sidewalk. That need to be trimmed back.
On the right-hand side?
As you're going up the hill.
Right, like right on the curve?
Yeah. And they, they should be trimmed by the, by the parking lot, so it's, it's.
I, that could be a code.
I know, in Plattsburgh, you don't have those trimmed. You, you know, it'd be a fine for.
Well, we have that too, we dealt with that on Plattsburgh, I think. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that, that can be dealt with, we can deal with that.
Where do the paver, cause I, I can't remember, where do the pavers start on the street? Is it like at Cedar Street?
At Cedar, they start at Cedar.
That's what I thought.
Church.
Yes, and they go all the way to church.
And then on the opposite side of the street, they start at the corner.
Corner. And then they go to the playground.
Just the playground.
Yeah. Maybe, maybe even before that, maybe just in front of.
No, it's that before the playground, so it's a very small section.
Always stops in front of the, the barber shop?
No, it doesn't go in front of the playground because our group get the.
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying going the other way. Goes for.
Oh, and then, yeah, the pocket park too.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, that one.
The first house?
Probably the first house, yeah.
Well, how about we concentrate on?
More downtown.
Downtown on, and one side. It, it's just really bad on this side, but more, more buildings. Well, do you want me to just, I don't know, measure it and do all of it? To put out to bid? Or do you want?
Could, could we get a? Could we kind of break the quote down as to?
Sections?
Yeah, and, and see what the bids come in at, like? And then see what we can afford.
So two sections, maybe?
Yeah, I think that, that might make sense, cause ma- you know, hey, maybe somebody's gonna come in with an astronomically low bid and, yeah.
Quote both sections and then maybe they'll have a good deal to do both?
Right. Okay, so if you divide it in half, probably it's Cedar to the Yellow Building?
Yeah.
And then, uh.
Park it?
Yeah.
And then, oh, oh, I was on the other side of the street.
We're still on the same street.
Oh, you're still on the same street, okay.
I was on the other, and then from that point to church would be two halves on that side of the street.
True.
I'd agree.
Okay.
Now. If you did the sidewalk, I think, is, is the brick to the buildings, um, on that side of the street.
You hit some.
So it might be mortified for you.
There it is, yeah, I'm sure it is. I'm sure in music areas, it's gotta be six feet deep, I don't know whereabouts it is. Yeah, it's three. It's possible.
Yeah, I don't think we'll be able to afford the whole thing, but I like Kim's idea of breaking it into two and getting.
Nick's idea.
Oh, Nikki's idea.
Nikki's idea.
Nikki's idea, oh, I gotta give credit where credit is due.
I don't wanna deal with that.
Yeah, I like that idea. You know, break it down better, so we can see what we can really afford.
Yeah, and, and maybe, maybe there is gonna be somebody that'll come in and say, you know, I can give you a really good deal to do all of that. Which would be great, but.
Okay. Great. Okay. We talked about the water class. Oh, we have a wastewater credit that we need to take care of.
Okay, so, this on the floor, I'll make a motion to approve. Hundred and sixty-eight dollar wastewater credit. To ninety. This is Drew at ninety-four Church Street, Champlain Road.
So a second, second. Discussion?
Um, I don't have any questions, I thought this is well presented, so.
Certainly is.
She, she printed pictures for everybody at the baseball.
I see that.
Yeah.
And she included a picture of where her son pump drinks out to, so.
Yeah, yeah. And Mike did confirm that, um, the water that was in the basement was pumped out of the basement. Okay, perfect, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Prove as much as cares. I just have one quick thing, um, to add. When, when I attend the shared services meeting with the county, with all of the local governments, they bring up different ideas of different ways that we all might save money by sharing services. There, one idea that's been brought up, I guess, over several years, is the idea of a countywide EMS. So, um, I'm just going to read this paragraph on this, what they're doing is the town of Plattsburgh is proposing that, um. Each municipality contribute a certain sum of money to have a study for a countywide EMS system. So I'm gonna read this paragraph, just so you know a little bit of the background and I'll give you a little more information about it. It says, "The topic of a countywide EMS system has been a subject of interest for years, it was even explored back in the late eighties. Yet, three decades later, the subject remains a juggernaut. A patchwork of agencies and service models throughout the city, towns and villages of Clinton County have no uniformity. With some forecasting a system collapse is not a matter of if, but rather when. Pressure points continued to mount that include but are not limited to costs, sustainability, staffing, recruitment, response time and coverage. There are a number of known opportunities as well as challenges to a countywide model. It can also be argued, one does not know what is not known. Therefore, a formal and independent needs assessment must be conducted to do a deep dive of all aspects later coupled with a possible model for consideration." So when this idea first came out, um, I said that because we are just part of the town of Champlain in terms of paying for EMS. We ourselves, as a village, don't pay for EMS. That we would work with the town of Champlain and what they wanted to do. But meanwhile, in this study proposal, they're saying that the three villages will each contribute twenty-five hundred dollars. So I need to let the powers-to-be know that we're not going to do that, or if you feel we should, of course, I wouldn't say we should. I already put it out there that I felt we were not going to contribute that, but I don't think I should really speak for the entire board. And, just one more thing, and I also contacted the town of Champlain supervisor and I said, you know, how do you feel about this, what's your response going to be? And he said, "Well, we up here are very happy with Champlain Moore's EMS and that's what we're, we wanna stick with. We don't wanna participate in the countywide system." Which I tend to agree with, but I think the board needs to understand this. Before I respond formally to them and say we are not going to join in this study.
Well, I, I think Champlain Moore's EMS is doing real well, both in the way they do things, the equipment they have. They respond to hundreds, even thousands of calls a year. And they are, financially, I think they're doing well. So I, I can't see where we would wanna throw that all into a countywide system. But it's really good.
Yeah.
I, I just, I can't see it. I, I never heard that before about, going back in the eighties, about a countywide system, and I, I've been involved in, in that area for off and on for years.
Some of the areas, and I don't know specifically which ones, are, are, are not well-covered. And there are long wait times and it's gotten extremely expensive. So maybe regionally, maybe those areas are going to have to come together and, and organize something among themselves, but as far as a countywide.